Good evening. Today is Tuesday, March 1st. I'd like to welcome everyone to our school board meeting. Members present in the boardroom are members Wilson, Lessons, Jacobs, Holloman, Donley, and Bellamy. And online, we have member Higgins. He just came on. All right, so at this point, I'd like to ask, oh, and we also have our Dr. Bishop. We have Katie Grant to my left, as well as Ellie Shaw, our student representative to my left, to the left of Katie. So with that, we would please stand for the pledge. Ms. Shaw?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Land acknowledgement, please.
On behalf of the Anchorage School Board, I want to take a moment to recognize and offer gratitude for the sacred ancestral lands of the Denina people. We acknowledge and appreciate that our offices, facilities, and schools are on these sacred indigenous lands, and we honor the traditional care that has been given to this land throughout generations. We are grateful for the opportunity to grow, learn, work, and create educational communities on the sacred land. We extend continued respect for the many cultures, creativity, and resilience of us indigenous peoples. Shonan.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. So that brings us to item A3, the approval of the agenda.
Madam President, I move we approve the agenda as listed.
Second. It's been moved in second to approve the agenda as presented. Is there any opposition? Seeing none, the agenda stands approved as presented. I would like to welcome everyone to our meeting, and thank you for attending and supporting the work of the Anchorage School District, as well as the work of this board. The board thanks students, parents, our staff, our school business partners, and the entire community for your investment in our district, for your time, your talents, and of course, your tax dollars. So welcome, everybody. And that brings us to item B on our agenda, our community reports. And we are going to start with Colonel Delamater. Are you there, Colonel? Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
All right. I got just two quick items for the council. Thanks for giving me a few minutes. Number one, I just want to give the team an update that's effective today, 1 March. Colonel Aguilar, the installation commander here, J-Bear, masks are no longer required on the installation for fully immunized personnel. This is in direct alignment with some recent changes made by the CDC, and also guidance that has come down to us through the Department of Defense channels. So we do have some exceptions largely within mask wear being required in some of our medical facilities if directed by a commander based on mission requirements, or if we have someone that's got symptoms, positive tests or exposure with someone COVID, which would make sense. So that obviously puts us a lot more alignment with certainly some decisions that were made recently by the by the school board and school district. So I'm happy that because of course, the four schools we have on base, we've got some alignment there on the on the mask policy. The second item I have is Dr. Bishop and I had the pleasure of participating as representatives on 10th February for the Alaska State Council on Education for Military Children. Great session. We had a chance to work with several folks from across the area and the state. One of the things that we're working on is we're working with the Office of the Secretary of Defense and the State of Alaska's Division that governs professional licensing to help make it easier for us to recruit and hire military family life counselors to put in our some of our local schools where our military children attend. So very grateful for Dr. Bishop's partnership on that, and I'll yield to questions for the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Colonel. Are there any questions or comments for the Colonel? All right. We appreciate your time, Colonel. Thank you. And now that brings us to our, oh, we have a special presentation tonight. Well, always special with Ellie. But we also have some other young people that's gonna chat with us tonight. And so we'll start with you.
Beautiful. Thank you. So Student Advisory Board, or SAB, met on February 15, 2022 at 11:15 a.m. here in this very boardroom. During this meeting, we heard from each middle school and high school to some normal reports. We heard from our school board representative, member Carl Jacobs. We heard from our Osag region for representative Maggie from Polaris, myself, about the school board report, and the delegates who attended the Association of Alaska School Boards Conference, which you will hear about soon. I was then reelected as SAB president, which I'm very, very grateful for, and excited to be in this position for another term. And then the next Student Advisory Board meeting is on March 22, 2022, from 8:15 a.m. to 10:15 a.m. And this is our second to last meeting of the school year. So we have this March 1, and then our April 1, and then we're done with the school year. And now I would like to bring up Lydia, Maggie, and Josh to talk about our experience in Juneau at the Association of Alaska School Boards Conference.
Welcome, Lydia, Maggie, and Josh. I know you guys already had, we've already heard so much about you from members Lessons and Higgins and Wilson. So you guys really impressed them. I hope you had a wonderful time, and we're glad you're here. So whenever you're ready, we'd love to hear about your time in Juneau.
Hi, I'm Lydia Shock. Thank you for the invitation to come and speak to you guys today. I'm a junior at Polaris K-12 and an ASD Student Advisory Board Representative. In February, we attended the Alaska Association of School Boards Fly-In and Youth Advocacy Institute in Juneau with school board members Higgins, Lessons, and Wilson. We had the opportunity to meet and discuss ASD and AASB legislative priorities with ASD lobbyist Heather Brakes, prior to going to the Capitol to speak one-on-one and hold audience with Senators Begedge, Kaufman, Wilisowski, Reback, and Holland, and Representatives Tar, Drummond, McCarty, Fields, Johnson, Snyder, and Story. Member Lessons, Elsa arranged for a dinner after the Super Bowl with Representative Shoggy, who shared with us his path to leadership and encouraged us to carve out our own. Three of us had never had the opportunity to be in our capital city before. We used the occasion for some casual exploring and enjoyed our extended and lively dinners with our board members. They genuinely listened to our concerns and opinions. During one such dinner, we were getting live updates on the Diamond versus Wasilla hockey game championship, when Diamond won, we celebrated with dessert that was the size of our faces. We were inspired by fellow student leaders, school board members, and legislators to research and research the issues, unpack legislation, and effectively put our voices forward to effect change.
Hello, my name is Joshua Pack, and I'm a freshman at Polaris K-12, and I'm also a SAB representative. At the Youth Advocacy Institute, we have the opportunity to network with many talented and passionate youth from across the state, both urban and rural. Through sharing successes, ideas, and challenges, we were able to learn from each other and develop new perspectives. We learned how to collect our thoughts and organize our voices. I was able to prepare questions for legislators on my group's behalf and engage in meaningful dialogue during a legislative panel. Some of the most valuable takeaways was learning how to access our legislators and learning about the legislative process. Since returning to our school, in our student leadership class, we have now shared how to find out who represents us both in district and regionally. We have also read some House bills and even helped a fellow student prepare to testify in a legislative hearing. We are learning how to take action on matters that impact us and learn how to be heard. Beginning the fourth quarter, our student leadership will now have a requirement for our members to attend a local city council meeting, and I am looking forward to bringing back my experience to my school and back to the ASD Student Advisory Board.
Thank you, Josh.
Hello. All right. Hello, my name is Maggie Cochrane, and I'm a freshman at Polaris K-12. I am also an SAB representative, but I also have another position as the Region Four Representative for the Alaska Association of Student Government. My takeaway from the conference has really been valuable, even at even at the Alaska Association of Student Government, we even have a brand-new committee about Alaska legislation and how Osag the voice, like leaders of Alaska, and how the students can bring our opinions to legislation, whether it's House bills or sending our advocating letters, and just being more involved in that sense. Let's see. I think my biggest takeaway from the conference personally was the fact that student voice really does have power, and particularly in my voice. I've learned, like, I had the opportunity to testify, being invited by Representative Ken McKenley, and testifying in House Bill 108 was a really incredible experience, but also incredibly nerve-wracking. And I think it's one of absolutely gonna be one of my highlights as being a freshman in high school. High school. And I think without the opportunities, without this conference, I don't think I would have been capable of doing the things that I've done. And just, again, just thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to do this and allowing me to learn just how powerful the students' voice can be.
Thank you, Maggie.
My name is Heidi Pastashek. I'm a teacher at Polaris K-12, and I got to escort these four students down to Juneau. I would like to thank the Anchorage School District for this massive investment in our most renewable and sustainable resource, which is our student leaders. It was a privilege to watch these students become confident, knowledgeable, empowered, and experienced in the legislative process and understand the direct implications on their education and their futures. I strongly believe that the return on your investment will be tenfold. So much was learned, and it's exciting to see our students already putting these lessons into action at their schools and the district and state level. On a personal note, it was a highlight of my career to work collaboratively with administrators, school boards, teachers, and students as we organized our voices, educated ourselves on the issues, and advocated for pro-education legislation. We all want good things for kids. Member Lessons, Wilsons, and Higgins, or as we came to know you, Kelly, Dora, and Pat, thank you. The selfie on the screen kind of captures the moment. Because of your graciousness and your approachability, our bond was instant, and we quickly became a team. You were our home base, our culinary tour guides, our strongest advocates, and our biggest encouragers. Your example of commitment, passion, and integrity will certainly be the most enduring lesson. For that, I am beyond grateful. And for you, Mr. Higgins, we know you're listening, and on behalf of all 43,500 ASD students, we will continue to respectfully advocate for predictable, adequate funding.
Thank you. You guys, that was awesome. And you are, so I am absolutely so jealous.
Oh, pass clapping.
I am so jealous, because when I go later this month, I think I have to go alone. I won't have. Thank you, guys, for sharing. And you are so right. Your student voice has power, and I am so glad that you're stepping into your power. Are there any questions from, because I want to know about the Advocacy Institute as well. Did you guys, did you meet other students from around the state? And how was that?
I personally thought it was really incredible, like, going on the conference. I never realized just how many school districts that they were, and just how many students, and especially their own problems and the things that they're advocating for. I didn't realize the amount of issues that are happening around the state, but also just like how unique every individual is. Because everyone in that conference, all those students that, they brought their own unique qualities, and it was really nice to be able to meet them and be able to know them.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Other question?
The diversity of the issues, I think, was just what we have here in Anchorage and what other schools were facing. And it was, that was very enlightening for all of us.
Awesome. Member Holloman?
I'd just like to add something of a comment. I was active in a way in North Carolina when I was a high school student, where we had about nine million people, and you live in a state of less than 800,000. Your voice does have power. This is a state where you can simply choose to engage and make a difference. One person and a group of people really can have an influence. And just because it's a small state doesn't mean you shouldn't do that. So, yeah, you you can call people in Juneau, you can interact with them, and you get a lot more respect than many other places, just to start with, as well as having the ideas you have and having the energy you have. So thank you for going, and thank you for what you advocated for. And yeah, don't let up.
Thank you. Thank you for putting their feet in the places where they will make a difference, too.
Member Lessons, and then member Higgins?
Thank you. I'm really curious about Maggie, your experience testifying on behalf of SB 108. And I know that your leadership class helped you think through your testimony. I wonder if you could just share what the talking points that you, I mean, this is putting you on the spot, but I have high expectations that you could share a little bit about what you shared.
Yeah, thank you. So I had the opportunity to testify for House Bill 108, which is vocational learning. So in a sense, it's bringing opportunities such as King Tech all around the state when it comes to outside training. And in my leadership class, like student government class, we did our, my favorite thing in the world is crowdsourcing, sort of bringing all our collective ideas together and sort of just finding the universal ideas of like what we really want to advocate for, like, what do we truly believe in. And I think some of the things that I added in my testifying is just how valuable being able to realize, well, I guess the importance of just how school is, like, in classrooms is, at times, it's overwhelming, and it's hard to realize why it's important. Like, why do we have to keep learning all this, like, knowledge? And when you're being able to work on the field, you finally just realize how useful everything that we're learning really just comes to play. And the fact that having this opportunity would maybe shed some light on industries in Alaska that are maybe are underlooked, and you're not able to realize that, oh, you have this opportunity, or able to even realize that is, you have a chance to do this. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. She did pretty good. So member Higgins, and then we'll go to member Jacobs.
It was, it was an excellent trip, having a chance to talk to all legislators. And I have to say, they wanted to hear from the students, not me. But that's understandable. They made it personal. They could explain and provide explanations and examples of how the funding impacted things and other decisions, and it connected better with the legislators this time than I've seen in the past. It was, it was really outstanding job by all the students. And I just want to say, I really enjoyed it, and I appreciate the fact that you were with us. You make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you, member Higgins. Member Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam President. And thank you, everyone, for the report and for being willing to go to Juneau and advocate for education. We all second Vice President Holloman's statement that your voices clearly do have power, and I'm glad that the light was shone on that through this trip. And there's a reason why your testimony at these meetings is first. There's a reason why the board was elbowing each other to represent us at the Student Advisory Board. And there's a reason why folks want to hear from, folks in Juneau want to hear from yourself, and not, there's probably a few reasons why they want to hear from yourself and not Mr. Higgins. But your voices are powerful and they're valuable. So we appreciate you. Thank you. And thank you for coming to the night.
All right. Thank you. Member Wilson?
I had an amazing time. I really did. These folks were all so much fun, so engaging. We really did click initially. It truly was amazing. And when it came to our legislative visits, the opportunity, we did have to split up, so we had smaller groups going in to visit with the legislators. And I had Heidi and Maggie and Ellie with me. We won't call them teams, because we're all a team. But but for me to walk in and have the perspective of the school board member, of a teacher, of students, to all collectively be in that room, and for the legislators, when they had questions, for them to each, for each of us to provide different perspective, was was truly a golden opportunity. And I would, I would love to do that again and have the same kind of collaboration with students, teachers, and school.
My turn's next. I'm sorry. All right.
I also have to say that I know we hear that some of our students are struggling. We hear that. But but here are examples of the amazing students that the Anchorage School District are producing. And it really feeds my soul to know that our future is in these students' hands. And they're just amazing. And the teachers that we have are amazing.
Yes, indeed. So are there any other questions or comments for our fabulous team? All right, you guys are awesome. Thank you so much. So, you know, I don't know, Lydia, Maggie, and Josh, I might have to call you when I'm in Juneau so I can get some tips.
Yes, please.
Ellie, you know you are amazing. You're here with us all the time. And Ms. Pastashek, thank you so much. Because without your guidance, they would, they would struggle. But you're there to lift them up, and I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good job. Thank you. Okay, so now let's move on. We are now at item C, goal monitoring. Dr. Bishop?
Thank you, Madam President. We have two reports to share with you, and I will spend some time reviewing them just for the content, as they are for the college career and life-ready, and they're set up similar template, but not exactly. So we'll start with the AP course completion rate. Return to the first page. You'll see the goal at the top, which is really collective in the college career life-ready. And this particular look is simply an indicator. There isn't an interim goal written for it. So we use this as an indicator of college readiness. And we're looking at the successful completion of advanced placement or AP courses, as we know from empirical evidence, that it's a strong indicator of college success and being prepared. Successful completion means an A, B, or C in their class in high school. It does not mean a score on the AP exam. It's actually successful completion while they're here with us. Although the benefit of getting a three, four, or five is that receiving university could give you college credit. So we want to increase our students and increase the courses at our schools. So we are on track for this overall goal progress. But the data at the bottom we'll share over time. And it is actually AP course completion rate, which means you had to have earned an A, B, or C, is with all students nine through 12. And so it isn't just, there are certain grade levels that AP courses are more available for students, if you say, but we put nine through 12 in all of them, because there are some prereqs to these. So we have the attempt to the total students that could be, which are nine through 12 students, and the pass for the students who attempted. So the attempt of total and those who passed with the attempt, with an A, B, or C, of course. So it's in those given years. The next sheet gives additional information. Again, set up two different years so a comparison can be made. We can start to look at trends more when there's more data. Two points, just make a line, not necessarily a trend. And 2021 is two semesters. 2122 is only one semester. So please keep that in mind, that you will have further updates. The number of students in grades nine through 12, and then in each of the student groups, is listed. The number of students who attempted, the percent of students who attempted, back to that total. So it's using those data in those lines to compare. The percent of students that passed out of the total, and the percent of students who pass out of who attempted. So that gives you a different look at the whole than to the subgroup of students who just took the course. Because remember, we're trying to improve it overall with adding additional courses as well. So we're not trying to narrow who gets in. We're not trying to separate and have special spaces for some kids and some not. We want to float all boats and add more courses. At the bottom, you'll see we have this different schools types, comprehensive, alternative charter, and special schools or credit recovery, special programs. And then, of course, all the way on the right is the difference in the years. Please note that they are not true comparable years. It's just an update. One is two semesters, and one is just one semester. So we also looked at this by grade level. And again, certain grades, most students begin taking AP courses in 10th, 11th, and 12th. And that is demonstrated on the data. Next. So this just gives a little bit of background about the strategies and why we're looking at this for completion. We needed something that would give us an attempt to understand what makes a child college-ready. And on the empirical evidence and research about redefining readiness for college, AP plays a major role. So of course, we've shared with our equity report that we're engaged with equal opportunity schools as well. But we just want to not only increase AP, a child is just not ready for AP that really has a through line all the way through our system, from the very beginning of learning skills in middle school, prepping, and having those big, major overarching theories and questions that we teach with, as well as pre-AP and then AP. You'll see the different strategies that we're working through in the process as we move through. You'll see the goal for students, the goal for teachers, and the approach is, of course, if we follow our theory, that we'll practice, get feedback, practice again. It is a cycle. And the next sheet just shares where we are in those steps throughout the year. And of course, we defined what the schools were for you, school types, just in case you weren't sure about the comprehensive, alternative, and charter. I'm going to move right into the next one, which is financial literacy. And then if there are any questions on the content and the setup, that's for today so that you can understand it. And next time, we'll engage in dialogue. Financial literacy, this one is a tricky one, so I want to be very clear about how we attacked this one. Financial literacy came loud and clear, not just interestingly enough, we would think, from moms and dads and adults, but financial literacy as a goal came directly from students when we went out and surveyed. Students very clearly shared that learning about, they called it adulting. When we asked, what do you mean by adulting? They said, like, you know, paying your bills, college loans, things like that. So this is really wrapped up in financial literacy. We did look into this, and if you go back for just a second, financial literacy does actually have an interim goal, and that is that all of our students, and we're going to have a baseline this year, will increase and have an A, B, or C, earn an A, B, or C in financial literacy. And it's tricky, because when we did some research on this, this is what I'll share next, our baseline we're starting at zero, and there's a reason for this. Although ASD, which is the second bullet down there, has many different classes, financial literacy is an elective class. And when we looked into the courses, they really had different standards for which teachers were teaching to reach. And we're going to go with the national standards on financial literacy and kind of square everything back up to ensure that every child, since this is 100% of children, should have, be life-ready. And we're doing life-ready with one of the indicators of financial literacy. So we're taking it back to the baseline to be able to ensure that students have really great experiences in this. We have some very, very strong schools that start actually in their elementary and middle school. Northern Lights is a key example of this. They are very tied into junior achievement. And other schools have it as an elective, so it And other schools have it as an elective, so if you have free time in your schedule. So what we're doing is utilizing courses that are already requirements for graduation. We did not want to have an additional course for graduation because then something else must go. But when we put the people in the room, our educators and directors, they shared that, you know, we have economics and consumer economics that all students must take for graduation. And next fall, we're going to study this, do the, it's a scheduled curriculum review, and write into the economics course the financial literacy standards. And so there will be a mini subunit in, in the economics and consumer economics courses that are requirement for graduation that will, will, students will meet the standards on financial literacy so that we can ensure we grow into the future. We're not going to take away those other courses because they dig deeper into other things, but we're to ensure that all students have this. So we're starting with the class of 2020, which was, you know, a couple of years ago. And, but this is a class for older students, so we will have it rolled out in time for our juniors and seniors to engage in this course and be able to take it and meet the goal that the district has set up for adulting or life readiness. So there's a timeline for you to see the action steps. I just wanted to dig deeper because this one was, this one was actually the most difficult for us to, to figure out because we really did have some financial literacy. But when we looked into them again, they were very varied. And the best bet was for assurance of all students was to embed it in the economics class. Yep, so ready for your questions next time? I will, Secondary will be working with me as well as the experts to be able to answer specific questions. But we have a great plan, and thank you, students, very much. All right, thank you. And if there's any questions on the readability or content, just please don't hesitate to reach out.
Okay, so we'll have our conversation next time. But if there are any, do you have, if, if there are, so get your questions in on as soon as you can, but definitely by the next meeting. So any questions on the data right now? I mean, in terms of how it's laid out or? Yes?
This isn't meant to be a criticism, and it's, I can't quite form the, the idea in my head. But it does occur to me when we look at AP completion rates. AP is one of those classes where it's not expected that every student can finish it, often can complete it, which I, I think would be wrong. Obviously, if no one's passing it, it's not doing anyone any good. But, but a certain percentage of kids that don't successfully complete it is probably a healthy number. And that some kids will take those classes and realize college may not be for them. They really do need a different path. Unlike our, our other classes where we mean to place kids in a class that they can successfully complete, AP is just not quite like that. So I'm, I'm not sure what a good measure is. I, as, as you kind of alluded to, the idea that a student that wants to try it gets to is important. I think we need to do that. That maybe they wind up not being successful isn't necessarily the worst thing in the world if it's just not cut out for them. I was a pretty good AP chemistry student. I was a terrible AP history student. Same kid, different outcomes, different topics. I, I, I think it's an awfully complicated thing, and I, I don't actually know what a good measure is off the top of my head, but, but this is certainly a good place to start.
Thank you. And through the President, I, I mean, this is really a dialogue for next time, but it's understood in the goals and the guardrails that, that's why it's college, career, college or career, college, career, and life-ready, that it could, you not, you don't have to go to college to have a career. And the goal, though, is that we build capacity in students that they have that choice to make and not that a glass ceiling was placed on them because we didn't prepare them. And that's the pre-work of AP. And whether they choose it or not is not really an indicator of success or failure. What we want to be sure is that if they do choose it, you know, how are they doing with our courses? That's why we're not utilizing the actual AP test as a success rate. For what you just said, colleges have said that completion of, when you finish strong through an AP course, whether you pass the AP assessment or not, you are actually better prepared for college to have a, an, an understanding of it. So I think we're along the same lines, but the recommendation is to use, to, to allow students to take a more rigorous course.
And if you want to put in a, a question for the next time, Member Holloman? Because we're not having the conversation tonight. I just, we're just getting the data. Okay.
I was just going to say, I'd forgotten that we do prepare students for AP classes. Back, back in the day, there was no such thing as pre-AP. Thank you.
Yeah. All right. So with that, thank you, Member Holloman and Dr. Bishop. Thank you very much. Again, get your questions in, please. That brings us to our Item D, which is our public comment period, our first public comment period. And I have my new notes somewhere. So we'd like to welcome you to the school board's first opportunity of the evening for public comment. We don't have many people that signed up for public comment in the beginning. We have, but the board sets aside, in terms of process, we set aside one hour time slot at the beginning of the meeting for public comment. There's also comments can be given right before an action item, but this is for public comment. Any comments, public comments in excess of an hour will be heard at the end. The school board welcomes the public to observe and contribute to our meetings. When you came in, you should have seen a blue, a blue and white sheet that gives you, that welcomes you to the Ed Center and reviews the participation guidelines. ASD conducts public meetings under Robert's Rules of Order. These rules require the board and the public to be civil and respectful of each other's opinions and statements. Here are a few requirements under Robert's Rules. Do not attack a member's or a speaker's motives, no profanity or foul language. And please refrain from disturbing the meetings. So there should be no cheering, applause, except for our students, I'm sorry. Applause, outbursts, or waving of signs or posters. So it is my duty as a board chair to enforce our decorum, rules of decorum and civility. And as such, I have the authority to rule a speaker out of order for violation of these rules. So with that, we will welcome our first speaker. Reed, and actually, for this portion of our comment section, we only have, we have Reed Davidson. Reed, are you here? Telephonic? Okay. All right, so Reed is not online. So we, that was our only person that signed up for public comment. The rest of the, if the speakers are on an action item. So we are going to continue by closing our public comment section. There will be, you will find written comments, written public comment on, attached to the agenda. That brings us to our consent agenda.
Madam President, I move we approve the consent agenda as was stood on the main agenda.
Second.
It's been moved. Let me just see, one minute. Okay, yes. It's been moved and approved, moved in seconds, I'm sorry, that we approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any opposition to the consent agenda? We'll have, oh, yes, Pat is remote, so we have to do a roll call whenever you're ready, Katie.
The student vote?
Here.
Member Higgins?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
President Bellamy?
Yes. Okay, and that motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. Next, we have our action item F. Whenever you're ready, Mr. Member Holloman.
I move to approve ASD memorandum number 083, revisions to board policy 3470, fund balance classification.
Second.
Moved in second to approve memorandum number 083, which is revision to school board policy 3470. Is there any discussion? Anyone wishing to testify? Seeing none?
Vote. The student vote?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Higgins?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
President Bellamy?
Yes. Thank you, and that motion passes. Memorandum number 083 passes, seven to zero.
Madam President, I move to approve ASD memorandum number 094, the addition of board policy 3311 dot, dot two, student community workforce agreement requirements for construction projects over $1 million.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second to approve memorandum number 094, addition to board policy BP 3311 point two. With that, we have several individuals who have signed up to testify. Some, let's see, telephonically, we have Russell Graves. Russell Graves, Mr. Graves, can you? All right, we'll try to come back around. Alicia Amberg in person. Welcome, you have three minutes. It doesn't matter. Your choice.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to testify today. For the record, my name is Alicia Amberg, and I serve as the Executive Director for the Associated General Contractors of Alaska. I am a product of the Anchorage School District and a graduate of Diamond High School. I am testifying today on behalf of the Association in opposition to the Student Community Workforce Agreement Policy. AGC is a trade organization representing more than 640 Alaska construction businesses, both union and non-union. Over half of our members are contractors, and well over half of those contractors are based in Anchorage. AGC is committed to full and open competition for all public projects. AGC strongly believes that the choice of whether to adopt a collective bargaining agreement should be left to the contractor employers and their employees, and that such a choice should not be imposed as a condition to competing for or performing on a publicly-funded project. Government mandates and preferences for CWAs and PLAs can restrain competition, drive up costs, costs, cause delays, lead to job site disputes, and disrupt local collective bargaining, as we're seeing firsthand in Seattle on a project with a PLA requirement. In cases where the use of a PLA would benefit a particular project, the construction contractors otherwise qualified to perform that work would be the first to recognize that fact and to adopt a PLA voluntarily. They would also be the most qualified to negotiate the terms of such an agreement. Government mandated PLAs can have the effect of limiting the number of competitors on a project. This is because government mandates for PLAs and CWAs typically require contractors to make fundamental, often costly, changes in the way they do business. For example, a PLA may require a contractor to recognize the local unions as the representatives of their employees on that job, use the union hiring hall to obtain workers, reintroduce inefficient work rules that have been abandoned over the course of collective bargaining, and pay into union benefits that non-union employees would never be able to access, forcing non-signatory employers to pay twice for retirement and healthcare benefits. Such changes are impossible for many contractors and subcontractors, particularly those not signatory to collective bargaining agreements. I sit on the CWA review panel for the municipality of Anchorage, and I have seen and heard firsthand from contractors, including women and minority-owned businesses, who simply will not bid on MOA projects that require a CWA. What will truly benefit students in our industry is collectively promoting career pathways into construction, partnering with our, oh, no, oh, 30 seconds. Partnering with our industry to teach students about the incredible benefits and career opportunities in construction. AGC just hired a workforce development director and recently launched a website ad campaign called WeBuildAlaska.com. Before we were given funding for this campaign, we had to justify and outline our measurements of success. How will ASD measure the success of this policy? There are too many questions and not enough evidence proving the claim that CWAs will improve the economy or efficiency of a project. Please vote no on this policy.
Thank you very much. Next, in person, we have Ron Albin, Albin, Albin. Welcome. You have three minutes.
My name is Ron Albin. I am a local CPA, and our firm works with a lot of contractors, both union and non-union. And I am here to speak in opposition to memo 94. It's important to understand what this will do. This will commit the school district to sign contracts for over $1 million with essentially union contractors only. Yeah, I understand the, the memo doesn't say that in those words. However, in, in practicality, it will exclude over 70% of the active construction workforce in Alaska and locally in, in the city of Anchorage. Section A of the memo indicates that the proposed policy is to advance important interests held by the district. One must ask if exclusion of a majority of the construction workforce is an important interest held by the district. If you vote for this policy in this memo, it clearly is. The memo continues to go on that this policy is for use to the fullest extent allowed by law. To me, that indicates that implementing this policy is required for all contracted, contracts which applies. There is no options. This creates a carve-out for a section that generally applies to union contractors. Section C of the memo, defining the review team, identifies at least one member with a clear conflict of interest. What does a representative of the Building and Construction Trades Council of South Central Alaska have to do with an unbiased review of potential awardees? Even in advisory role, this is a conflict. Also, who will select a representative from industry? What will be their person, their personal interest? I think it's definitely public knowledge, at least three of the board are conflicted with this vote in that they have strong ties, including employment, to union organizations. This policy is not so subtly presented under the guise of benefiting, benefiting students and their careers, but in reality, has very little to do with students. Most students of school age are ineligible to work in most construction jobs. The policy goes on to tout the opportunity for students or their family members to be prioritized, and talks about apprenticeship programs to increase the opportunity to begin a construction career. Most non-union contractors also have apprenticeship programs. Alicia Maldy of ABC Organization, I believe, has presented written testimony in this form, and apparently has not been able to get back out of town to testify orally here tonight. I am quite aware of their apprenticeship.
Your time is up, sir. It is, thank you. You're welcome to submit more comment if you'd like. Next, telephonically, we have Manuel Garcia Rivera. Next, telephonically, we have Manuel Garcia Rivera. We don't see Manuel. Let's try in person, Stephen Rowe. R-O-W-E. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Steve Rowe, and I have two children within the Anchorage School District. Roughly, we have another 12 years or so together, so I felt the need to come down here and talk about it. I am also a part-owner in a local contracting firm here in Anchorage, and personally, in my career, I've been a part of over 15 different school projects and over $80 million in work on my own. What I can tell you is that as we've worked through this and our kids, I'm struggling to find how this is going to help our children as we go forward. Right now, I'm sure everyone's aware that costs and the problems that we're all facing with the work shortages is becoming a large issue. But part of that, as we face it, I don't know if you're aware, the last several bids for ASD, there's been one, maybe two contractors at each of those bids, and I happen to be one of them. I can promise you that if you do pass the CWA, that number's going to start to shrink by at least one. There are people who cannot do the work, they're not going to sign up and work for CWAs, and we do depend on the non-union workforce to help us. I am a union contractor, I am pro-union, but this isn't going to help us in the long run, nor is it going to help the children. As I've talked to a bunch of them over the last several days, as I was made aware of this, I have at least 15 of the subcontractors who told me they will not be bidding, and they will not be doing the work, some of who I have a project coming up that we won recently. I don't know if they're going to show up to complete that work as it is right now. I understand the point of building our workforce and trying to get everyone up in there and building through the trades. I've never been to college myself. I came up through the trades, and I managed to find myself where I'm sitting. And I did that without a CWA in place. There are a ton of programs out there, both through the union, through AGC, ABC. All of these programs can help kids get into the workforce and start working their way through the trades. But I promise, this is going to limit the opportunity of a lot of subs that we have out there and their ability to work. I've been paying taxes and been a part of this and seen a lot of the school district jobs over the years, over the last 25 years, and costs are going up through the roof, as we're all aware, with inflation. I can tell you, as a union contractor, to be perfectly frank, I will make more money if you pass this. But that's not the right thing to do. You don't have enough money currently to fix the jobs that you need to do and to fix the schools as they stand, and the ambitions for growth or additions are financially challenging, as we can all understand as well. If we pass this through, that's just going to put another marker, and I don't really know how we're going to get to that point. I've also talked with several other contractors who would try and do it, but they also said that their rates are going to go up within intensely. And they also know that their retirement funds, they may join the union, but if they don't see the long term all the way through, they'll just be double paying on benefits. And we need to work through those. I think there are organizations who want to help fix this issue, but CWA won't.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have telephonically, Jed Sandy. Not seeing Jed online. In person, Aaron Bartel. Welcome, you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Aaron Bartel. I'm a part-owner in a small excavation company in Anchorage. I grew up in Anchorage, attended ASD. I'm a full-time resident in Anchorage now and plan to live here, and hopefully someday have a family and put my own kids through ASD. Taxpayer, of course. I would like, well, thank you for the opportunity to testify here, and I am in opposition of the Community Workforce Agreement that is, we're talking about. I've worked on many ASD projects over the years as a general contractor and a subcontractor. If the CWA is passed, we would no longer be able to work for the school district, which hurts myself and all of our employees. We do not have the staffing that would be required for all of the reporting requirements in the CWA, and we're non-union, so I would have to add approximately $20 an hour to all of my employees' wage to pay the union pensions. We already pay medical, HSA, their hourly wage, a SEP program, which is a fully funded employer-paid program, and we pay leave for many of our employees. The only way I could be competitive with a union is to cut my own employees' benefits to pay it to the union pensions. This seems highly unethical, detrimental to an open-shop business such as mine, and kind of discriminatory. Currently, the MOA has a CWA in place, and we do not bid on any of these projects. It'd be really sad to me to lose the ASD as another customer of mine. One of the areas we perform work with the ASD is fuel systems. Fuel for power generation, for instance, heating, remote, some of your outbuildings and main buildings. $1 million is a really low threshold for construction with any fuel systems. Fuel tanks can cost half of that. This would exclude us from most of the work we would be performing. This is specialized work, and there's not a lot of competent and trained people in Anchorage to perform the work, so the subcontractors we team up with would all be excluded. By implementing the CWA, it would give a monopoly to companies that can comply with the CWA, whether or not they're trained and competent, and raise prices for ASD hurt my company and my employees. I do not believe that's the wishes of the school board. I would like the board to please consider requesting a specific meeting with AGC and ABC present to talk about our positions, similar to the board meeting hosted several weeks back that only invited the local 341 to be present. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bartel. Next, in person, Christopher Riley. Okay, welcome, Mr. Riley, you have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Chris Riley. I'm a lifelong resident of Anchorage East High, class of '93 graduate, and I have five kids that have graduated or are currently in the Anchorage School District. I'm one of the owners of a local roofing company that has been in business since 1962 in Alaska. We're an open-shop contractor with about 80 active employees during the summer construction season. We have been an active contractor with the ASD at least since I was in high school. After reading this SCWA, it is clear that the authors are ignorant of the real challenges facing contractors with regards to the labor shortages. As a business owner and an employer, I'm shocked and offended this document implies that a supposed lack of diversity or unemployment of target groups is an active choice by contractors, that employers are gatekeeping the industry, and that this policy is somehow going to fix it. This is a false and unsubstantiated attack on contractors as a whole. To be clear, come this spring, when we bring on our new hires and unskilled labor workforce, we have three minimum requirements: be breathing, not be afraid of heights, and be 18 years old. This policy will not change if this SCWA is passed. While I have my doubts about this policy accomplishing any of its goals, I'm confident if the models of the current MOA/CWA will succeed in accomplishing two things: reduce participation of small businesses on ASD contracts, and raise the cost of construction for ASD projects. Neither of those things are good for our community, our businesses, or our employees. Last year, you had the Taku Elementary School Roof Replacement Project. We were not the successful roofer. But who was, was a small owner-operator with about 12 employees. This was his first roof project of this size and scale. This was a huge risk for him to take. If he got on the regulation and compliance of this SCWA, the addition of bureaucracy and the intimidation and uncertainty of dealing with labor organizations, this contractor would not have bid this project and would probably not bid future projects with this agreement included. This would be a disservice to the industry, our community, and the ASD. Competition is healthy for the industry, contractors, employees, and customers such as the ASD. You're welcome to contact me after this. I will give you his contact information. He was not able to attend tonight to relate his story. Again, if the SCWA itself is modeled after the MOA/CWA with which the intent is clearly there, you will see a cost of construction increase. Let me explain. On an ASD project, the roofer wage is $42.62 and $17.63 benefit package. For open shop, this benefit package goes directly to the employer for them to choose how to spend it. With a CWA in place, this will not be the case. The employer will be forced to withhold either some or all this benefit package for the employee and distribute it to the designated units who are party to the CWA. I will not be able to finish, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Greg Rhodes, in person. Greg? Welcome, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Greg Rhodes. I work for an electrical contractor here in the municipality. I pay property taxes here in the municipality, and I have a student here in the municipality. I stand in opposition to the Community Workforce Agreement for a number of reasons. Primary reason that I stand in opposition to the CWA is that it is without a doubt discriminatory and will in fact disenfranchise a large portion of this community. Three-quarters of the construction trades are merit shop or non-union. Within this group, there are employees from all walks of life, including veterans, minorities, socially and economically disadvantaged members of the community. These individuals will no longer be allowed the opportunity to compete for the taxpayer-funded work unless they become signatory to the union. Imagine that 75% of our students who take a vocational path and become tradesmen or tradeswomen will not be afforded the opportunity to perform work on the schools that they are given an education in. That is discrimination. I've heard it said that it is not a problem for an individual to sign up and become signatory for a single job. The hidden truth is, until they have enough time with the union and become vested, they give up a substantial amount of their wage to the union. As many can attest here, you are indentured or you are not, and if you are not, you give that money away. The second reason that I stand in opposition to the CWA is that I do not believe a Trades Council representative should have any input in the administration of school construction contracts. They do not represent the taxpayer, the school board, the teachers, the administration, or even the construction industry for that matter. The Trades Council represents the unions and has only the interest of the unions it represents. The stated intent of this is to use the CWA to advance the important interests held by the district. The true intent is to advance the important interests held by the Building and Construction Trades Council. The third reason that I stand in opposition is that it appears this ordinance is outside of the scope and goal of the school board, which is to provide each student with an education of the highest quality in keeping with his or her capacity to learn. This goal shall be the basic factor motivating the school board's execution of its powers and duties. The CWA doesn't appear to provide each student with an education of the highest quality in keeping with his or her capacity to learn. If at last, the school board continues and votes for this ordinance, I make one last request that you allow a tax exemption to the 75% that are not allowed to compete. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That concludes our testimony on memorandum number 094. We have a write-in, I'm sorry. Shane Linds? In person, Shane, come forward. Sorry, I missed you, you have three minutes.
Thank you and good evening. Thank you for allowing us to speak on the CWA ordinance. My name is Shane Lindsay. I'm the president of the Building Trades of South Central Building Trades Council here in Alaska. We represent 15 construction trades, including plumbers, electricians, ironworkers, heavy equipment operators, and carpenters, to name a few. Imagine an ASD graduate acquiring their career-life skills working on an ASD project. This ordinance makes that possible. Construction projects provide careers that have good pay, healthcare, retirement, and training opportunities. However, the demand for construction workers is on the rise, and we must be, we must prepare and train for the shortfall. What better place than the ASD? Training construction workers is a three-legged stool: training, work opportunities, and people willing to take that opportunity. This ordinance brings all three of those together in an effective, cost-effective manner. Each trade has the ability and capacity to train workers at any level and produce quality workers. However, we need work opportunities to put people to work and individuals seeking careers. ASD can fulfill both of those needs. Over the past few years, tradesmen have left the area and in search of work and other opportunities, many of which have moved to lower 48. With this significant amount of work on the horizon through the federal infrastructure package, we need to seize every opportunity to develop the shortage of workers. This ordinance will provide the jobs and the people, and we can supply the training. Lastly, ASD is a great place to encourage and recruit individuals seeking a career in the construction industry. With a consistent working relationship this ordinance will provide to the trades in ASD, this will allow for better partnership and more opportunities for young adults. With the linkage agreements our institutions have in place, we can direct students to these opportunities and apply their newly acquired skills on the buildings that help mold the individuals they have become. I encourage you to pass the CWA ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. That is our last individual to sign up to testify. Okay, that brings us back to... If you did not sign up, then no, you may not. Thank you. Did we, just one minute. Thank you. Okay, so, what is the will of the board? Dr. Bishop, I don't know if you could have staff?
Would you like staff forward? Thank you, Mr. Roth. Would you like Mr. Whiting to join you?
I have a couple of questions, and I also submitted or distributed a list of amendments to be considered by the board. However, I have some questions about the testimony tonight. Well, I don't. Because, of course, I'm not a contractor. I didn't know there was opposition until yesterday, any written opposition. So, can you talk a little bit about the discriminatory aspect of this?
So...
Madam President, may I make a statement? I would like to go on record saying the administration had strong opposition to this policy, and we did share that with the board in a public meeting. And so I just want to be on record with that.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop.
So, through the President, you know, I would offer that, you know, it should not come as a surprise. To Dr. Bishop's point, we have indicated, as an administration, the likely economic effect of a CWA on industry. But it's not our place to go out and solicit people who are in the industry to come in to testify. That I would argue, when the board held its work session several weeks back, that it was only the union that was invited to speak. There was never any request to have ABC or AGC to participate. I would also argue that there probably hasn't been any real media coverage of this proposal as it moved forward. Again, it's not my place. The administration's not going to do that. But if we really want to be transparent, that we would have included those other parties that may have differing opinions. So now, you know, here at the 11th hour, as they are aware that the CWA is going to be acted on, most likely by the board tonight, that they're coming out. So, Madam President, with all due respect, again, we should not be surprised that they are coming out now.
Thank you, Mr. Roth. Any other, yes, member lessons?
I want to go back to the work session on February 8th, and it might have been Mr. Roth or another administration member, I don't remember my notes exactly, but the administration noted the volatile inflationary market for construction right now. This week earlier in our consent agenda and last week in one of our memos with the Aquarian Project, we had at least two projects that received single bidders without a CWA or SCWA in place at all. Are those single bid projects new to your memory in ASD's history? Is this unprecedented territory right now?
So, through the President to member lessons, I'm actually going to have Mr. Whiting talk to that because there is some history. But to your point, with the Aquarian Project specifically, and then we have another project that the board on the consent agenda approved, that we received a single bid from a contractor that, again, primarily hires union. Now, I don't know that this is causative because of, you know, other issues or extenuating circumstances. There is turmoil in the industry, you know, supply chain, labor, all these different factors, but it is an anomaly that these projects had a single bid and that the bids were significantly higher than the engineer estimates, which, again, were not always on target. But that these were so significantly above those estimates that, again, it did demonstrate that there is a lot of volatility in the market.
Thank you, Mr. Roth. Through the board president to member lessons. Yes, in my history, I have been a procurement officer for public construction projects for about 15 years, and this market is currently more volatile than we have seen in the past. We've seen it take ups and downs, but it is... We're seeing that, as Mr. Roth stated, the supply chain issues, labor issues, just volatility of risk in general. The insurance market around construction is extremely volatile, like we have never seen it. And I've consulted with colleagues that I deal with in the market that have been doing this for 30-plus years, and they've not seen volatility in the market that we have currently. So, it is, in my past eight and a half years with ASD, we have not typically been receiving one bid from contractors, you know, a single bid. This has been a recent trend, and we are also, we have looked at projects, you know, we've looked at other projects from other public entities. We've looked at the municipalities' projects. We've looked at the utilities that fall in municipalities such as AWU. And they are seeing, there are several projects municipalities listed that were also either canceled due to lack of bidders or canceled due to high cost from bidders. And one particular project that was canceled recently by AWU was a CWA project. And the municipality's administration did issue a document explaining that they believed that there were multiple factors, including that a CWA requirement was too difficult for the contractors to meet. Thus is why the cost delta was so significant that they had to cancel the project. And that's a public document you can find on the municipality that's been issued by the mayor's office.
Okay, board members, questions? Not seen, not seen any. I'm going to make a motion. Do I need to pass the gavel to do a motion? I didn't think so, I just wanted to ask. We have spent a significant amount of time on this, but what is clear to me is that I need to know more about the opposite voice, the other voice, the voice that came forward tonight. Again, like, I knew where the administration fell on this proposal. I did not hear any opposition since we started this process until yesterday from the public. So, my motion, I move to table memorandum number 094 until March 15th, I'm sorry, to our April 4th work session to give us time to really understand the other side of the story here. That's the motion, and I'll say more if I get a second.
I'll second for discussion.
It's been moved in second to table memorandum number 94 to the April 4th work session. And I've pretty much spoken to it. I just think that we have been working on, as I said, this policy. I did not make any public announcement regarding the policy. I did not solicit any input for the policy. I believe there is room in this policy to do good things for kids. I think that's what drove most of us. But as a responsible board member, when I hear terms like discriminatory, exclusionary, it causes me pause, at least pause enough for me to figure out what is the district's liability here. So, that's why I would make that, that's why I made the most. So, Member Higgins, I see your hand is up.
Thank you. This has been a long-running review in which the administration has had a tremendous number of times to attempt to delay and postpone discussions. In fact, we got to the end and it said, well, we just need more time. Let's go back to discussions. And the opportunity for making changes were made over and over and over again. Then the board got a going-to-be confidential legal opinion in regards to it, which is now public, so I don't need to really comment on that. But I've never seen such efforts from the administration to try to undermine something that has been working in other places, other than just the municipality of Anchorage. And at this particular point in time, in this juncture, if anyone following the process of what's going on, we have millions of people deciding they're going to retire, and the trades crafts are being hit hard. This is an opportunity to address those issues. It is an opportunity to help people here in Anchorage to get the skills, the people who are graduating, some who are residents here, of getting the skills. And it's important for the community. So, we've been through this over and over and over again. And every time, the administration says, well, give us more time to think about it. It's been a very long process. I think all of our meetings have been properly, publicly posted. We've got a good effort here with a good outcome, but we've listened to others. It's not limited so that an organization can choose not to be involved with having to finish a program, but they're not restricted from it. And it has a tremendous amount of value to the community. And we've seen that, not just in Anchorage, but elsewhere in the country they've got this. Our process, what we've done, we've discussed it, we've gone through it over and over and over again. And I certainly am concerned that people are... There's always two sides to every story, and I understand that, and I respect that, and I appreciate those that came forward tonight. But this action to simply delay, and that's all it would be doing, is simply delaying an action that the administration keeps asking us to delay, I think is inappropriate. I think we need to move on. I think we've had so many work sessions on it, so many opportunities to make changes to it, and the board has properly considered all those. I believe it's time to move on. So, I will speak against the motion, thank you.
Member Higgins, my motion is my motion. It has nothing to do with the administration. And it's based on recent information where I believe I need more understanding. So, I kind of take pause at you're blaming the administration for new information. So, I will now move on. Dr. Bishop, you had a comment?
Yes, thank you. And I represent administration. I am your, for lack of a better word, superintendent CEO. And my job is to provide you guidance and information the best that I can about your fiduciary responsibilities. And we have shared, time and time again, that this will drive up costs. I think tonight there's evidence of that. We have shared that this does eliminate that, yes, apprentices are the way to go for children. HB 108, I too testified on that, our CTE director. But there is a breadth of apprentice opportunities, union and non-union, in our city. So, if we want to help children, it's a good thing to help children through the trades, and all trades. We just have been sharing that this might narrow what we say we want to do. When you say that this is for children, it might narrow that. In addition, my job is to share the cost of doing business. And the cost of doing business will go up. Our lawyer said that. Administration, people who have worked in it for years have said that, as well as now people who own the companies who do our projects. I am not an expert in construction. I am not an expert in the trades. But I do listen to the people who are. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Yes, Mr. Roth.
If I might just add a comment to Dr. Bishop. I think, you know, the concern I would have is to Member Higgins' comments, you know, repetition fatigue is kind of a dangerous thing to fall into when I think the outcomes, as far as you can continue to peel back the onion to get to truth, it's the outcomes that matter. And we should be concerned that we have subcontractors and contractors coming forward and telling the board, when we talk about the context of opportunities for youth and students, that if we're discouraging the 75% of the non-union contractors to even participate in ASD projects, well, think about the impact on opportunities for young people, again, to get into the trades industry. So, again, I think this repetition fatigue should be considered. It is not particularly beneficial to the best outcome. So, Madam President, I just want to applaud your comments to get to, you know, there's more to this story that has not been allowed to come forward.
I feel I need more understanding. Member Holloman, and then I think I saw, did I see you, Member Donley? Okay, Member Holloman, before you.
Some of this is very concerning, and especially if we had a work session that was supposed to be for elimination and there was only one party invited, that's confusing to me as a board member because obviously, work sessions are about presentation of information. I wouldn't want the administration to just invite people that have one point of view, but I would want them to invite any concerned parties or suggest to the president that those parties come. We do want to hear from all sides of it, and the work session was really the place. So, I don't actually know how invitations were formulated or... That's a process I'm not familiar with. But that would be the place for everybody to come that has reasonable input. Also, I want to say, I don't have any illusion that this is for children per se or for our students. It is for people that have graduated out. A lot of, there's a branch of, or a section of the contractors that don't simply provide a job. They do provide a pathway to training. They provide a career, when you get right down to it. And there's a huge difference between a job and a career. My feeling, in having supported this and wanting it to go forward, is that we want the contractors on our projects to at least have a percentage of positions of the people working on those projects to be providing career paths. And an important component of that is growth, advancement of skills, the ability to earn a wage so they can actually live in Anchorage, live in the town they work in, and be part of the community. I've lived in communities where all the people that work on projects like this drove in for over an hour every day because they couldn't afford to live anywhere near the places they were working. I don't want Anchorage to be like that. There's some barriers to it. But we're headed that way. I know what it looked like 35 years ago when I got here. And people that worked construction and worked jobs had places to live here in Anchorage and had good lives. It's changing, and it is not in a way that has benefited the workforce all that much. I absolutely respect what contractors face. It's a tough business to make a living in. It's tough to stay solvent. It's worse right now, but it's always challenging. But the goal for me in supporting this is that there is a pathway in the people we hire that says, you're not just going to hire some people, you're going to offer good positions to people that they can grow in. And that's what I see this doing. If there's something structurally wrong with it, I haven't really hit it. I know it does add complexity. Complexity is bad to a degree unless it gets value for you. I don't think it adds volatility. It certainly doesn't add volatility for the workforce. It adds complexity for the employers and contractors, and we will have to pay that. I wouldn't want to misrepresent it to anybody as this is necessarily a cost-saving measure other than the fact that the people that we're hiring to do the work in our community can afford to live here and be productive citizens to it. I'm ready to vote on this tonight. Although, we'll qualify and say that any complicated policy doesn't always work out the way we intend. And I do think this is one that we're going to have to watch carefully as it goes forward to see if it's really doing what we want. But I think we're at the point where unless we pass it, I don't know that we find that out. We do have examples of it being in place in other places. I think we should go ahead and make our decision tonight.
Thank you, Member Holloman. Member Donley?
Thank you, Madam President. I also support making a decision tonight. It's been worked on for almost a year now, and it's got examples all over the nation of being successful, these types of agreements and requirements. And we have examples just locally here in Alaska, in Juneau. Both city projects and school projects utilize provisions that provide for some of them utilizing these workforce agreements. And also, within our own municipality, we've had direct experience with it because the Anchorage Assembly adopted a very similar proposal a few years ago or a while back. And there are a couple distinctions, small differences with this. And one is the dollar amount, which was raised and has been extensively discussed at work sessions and meetings of the Governance Committee. And the other thing is the makeup of the committee that establishes which projects would be required. Because this doesn't require every project to have a community workforce agreement, but has a committee process to identify those projects that are most appropriate for it. And there is a different makeup of the membership of that in this. But other than those major distinctions, it's pretty much very, very similar to what the municipality also has in place.
Thank you, Member Donley. Anybody else wishing to speak? Yes, member lessons?
CWAs, PLAs were new to me until roughly July of this past year when we began to go through this process. One of the things that shaped my thinking was to understand what the Seattle Public Schools have done. And they've created this, an NSCWA in Seattle. Part of their process involved a task force that brought people together. And I think, and they had a whole task force report that I've read and tried to understand. One of the things that I took from that, from their analysis, they thought about potential for cost increases, maybe having fewer interested sub... maybe having fewer interested subcontractors, the potential of having reduced participation by minority subcontractors. But they presented evidence suggesting that there was no evidence to support claims that PLAs either limit the pool of bidders, or drive up construction costs, and that the cost savings could be substantial. And in sum, the Seattle Public Schools Task Force found that those risks were weakly evidenced and unconvincing, and that the risks of cost increases in bid values and reduced competition were not proven. They also kept the focus on students. So there's a lot of food for thought out there. If we look at what other school districts have done, I just wanted to share those task force findings. Seattle is not Anchorage, but they are our nearest neighbor. And there's some analogous, there's something analogous there.
Thank you. And again, the intent of the motion is to further understand, to deeper understand, at least for me, not being a contractor, not having any inkling that there was a different side to what we, to the path that we have been on until yesterday. Now, from the public, we know about the internal, you know, process that we've gone through with the staff, but this is the first time I've heard from the community. So it seems to me that a pause to make sure that, not to change your mind, if your mind is already made up, but a pause to consider some of the information that we heard tonight, but not to belabor the matter any longer. We have to do it. We can vote on the motion. The motion is to table ASD memorandum number 94 to the April 4th work session. Not to get rid of it, to table it. We have almost, I think, July would be a year, so we are not quite at a year. We have been very conscious and very thoughtful with this policy. And I just don't see why three more weeks would make a difference. So anyway, call to vote on the motion to table until April 4th.
Student vote?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
No.
Member Jacobs?
No.
Member Holloman?
No.
Member Higgins?
No.
Motion fails, six to one. So what is the pleasure of the board? Member Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam President. Just wanted to speak briefly, and I appreciate it, hearing the conversation after working with member Donley since July, to help craft this for governance. We've gone through numerous edits and modifications in the version that was submitted for non-mash in weeks ago. In many ways, doesn't resemble where we started. And so I appreciate board members and administration for working with us on the product in front of us. When member Donley came to me and asked me to work with him on this proposal, I was not extremely familiar with the benefits of a CWA, or as member Lessons has helped identify since the SCWA. But I appreciate that this process ideally is in line with our goals and guardrails, that it helps facilitate pathways to career, or college and life readiness, prioritizes career development, and sets standards for pay and benefits. We've made improvements to the process, and I'm open if the board would like to discuss other perceived improvements to continue discussion. But I'm glad we're able to make a decision at this point. The one question that came up was regarding, I think it was from Vice President Holloman, was regarding the work session. And my understanding from attending that work session was we heard from representatives who were intimately involved with crafting municipalities' CWA in their process. And so that was the intent of that work session, was to engage in a sort of a mirror conversation. So I hope that sheds some light. But yeah, thanks again for the conversation. I'm still listening.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other comments? So I would, it looks like I'm the only one with any amendments tonight. But I would like to, for us, to revisit the amount, the construction project amount. Right now, it's at $1 million. The Muni is at $3.5 million. And I know the administration's recommendation was for $5 million. And so somewhere between $1 million and $5 million is where we are. Is there any interest in changing the project amount? Oh, I guess I will move, I'll make a random motion. It's not random, because I thought about it. I move to, let me find my notes. I move to raise the threshold amount of the SW, SCWA to $3.5 million, if there's a second. Hearing no second, that motion fails. The other motion that I, does anybody else have any motions? The only other motion that I would bring forward at this time would be, oh, it's not on this one. Wait. Yes. I move to modify the SCWA in Section 3 to read, "The board policy will be effective within 30 days upon passage and approval by the board." The 30 days would replace the immediately that's currently there.
I'd like to second for discussion.
Okay. So it's moved in second, that, to modify the SCWA in Section 3 to read, "The board policy shall be effective within 30 days upon passage and approval by the school board." So my thought is, it took us eight months to come up with the policy, and now we're going to implement it tomorrow. I just think we need time to decide on what the metrics are going to be, so that we have time to do it, to do it right. Member Holloman?
If I can ask Mr. Whiting through the chair, you have contracts in progress that would be disrupted if this was, if this policy took place tomorrow?
Through the board president, to member Holloman. Yes, sir, that is correct. We have, as the policy is written, it gets a little more complicated than that. But just to answer your question straight off, we have, upon immediate implementation, we have three projects that would be impacted. And then I'll, if I'm allowed, I will discuss further the few nuances. The Aquarian GCCM, we plan to issue 10 March, you know, if that project were delayed, because obviously, as we understand, there is no standing committee that has already been stood up for this as a review team. There has no been negotiation, no negotiation of a CWA boilerplate that I'm aware of. I've not seen any version of it. So if those issues delay the projects, the project, it would compress our schedule for value engineering for the Aquarian GCCM, RFP, and it would provide substantial delays to the project, although it will not critically flaw the project and stop it from occurring. It will occur, but there will be delays. The next project would be the Mirror Lake Invitation to Bid. That project was, we are anticipated to issue mid-March. Same issue, but more significant. If standing up the committee and negotiating the CWA agreement final, you know, delayed, we would have a significant impact to this construction project. We would lose our ability to do construction this summer, and the project would be delayed a season. Third project, fairly large project, Betty Davis East High School Earthquake Recovery FEMA Project. It's a two-season, two-summer project, plan to issue mid-March. Same issue with substantial delays would cause us to lose construction season, and would significantly impact the project. Also, I'd like to point out that the language in the CWA, in the two policies put forward, we have a proposed change to Board Policy 3311.12, which indicates the language within it in Section B and Section E, both indicate the beginning of the procurement process, meaning the solicitation process. Then if we look at the revision to Board Policy 3312, it talks about execution of the construction project. Now, the beginning of the construction project solicitation occurs approximately 84 days prior to the execution of a project. So if we were to change policy, and it addresses execution, it puts several projects in sort of a questionable understanding of how to apply the policy.
Thank you. If I may follow up?
Yes, you may.
I appreciate that's illuminating. It does make sense to me that purchasing has things in progress, and they need to be able to let those things go through, as they have been working on them. I would support the change in the effective date for 30 days from now.
Other comments?
A follow-up?
Sure. Member Lessons?
Thank you. Would that 30-day window allow you then to successfully negotiate sort of the closure of those current projects?
Through the board president, to member Lessons. Yes, the cycle that I just described in my response to board member Holloman was getting at that issue, that the issuance of solicitation through the execution of contract, average metric is 84 days, if we average invitation to bid for construction and RFP for construction. That, even a 30-day cycle creates conflicts for us, particularly because there's execution language in Section 3312 as proposed. That creates a conflict between 3311.2 as proposed, Section B and E versus 3312. So in order to deal with that lifecycle of that conflict, solicitation versus execution, a three-month window would allow us to start on a fresh slate, where we would not be conflicted with bringing projects to the board that had been solicited prior to the effective date of the policy, but yet would need to be executed in conflict with the policy. So it would reduce that conflict. So my answer, you know, certainly, the 30-day is better than not, but it would be much more helpful to be able to cycle through the projects appropriately, and then be able to start fresh.
And if I might, through the president, just with regards to the review team, and not to sound flippant, but I guess I would have to ask that question of the board, because there are two members appointed by the board president, one of whom is the chairperson of the review team. So my question would be, how soon can you appoint these two members? And who is that chairperson? Because that individual really has got the responsibility to organize a review team, to develop the evaluation criteria based on the guidance within this document, that, you know, we are a voting member, but the administration's not running this. So how long would it take to appoint these members, to appoint the chairperson, to allow that individual time to work with the Trades Council to get their representative? And it was brought up from the industry. Who is that person? Is it going to be from the AGC, from the ABC? That these people have to be brought in, that they have to be somewhat organized and informed, hey, there's your, here's your purpose, here's your mission. So I guess my question is, how long would it take for that process to happen before we could really have a meaningful review team process? I don't know what that answer is.
And I guess the 30 days for me just seemed like a reasonable amount of time to figure all of that out. But I have no idea.
But I don't know. I think, you know, I guess I would submit, I mean, 30 days is kind of an arbitrary number. I think the intent would be to get into that timeframe. But I think I would ask the person who you appoint to the position of chairperson, when he or she feels that they are prepared to do this process, 30 days seems reasonable. But again, how long will it take to vet candidates, to hire candidates? I don't know.
Any other comments from the board? Member Donley?
So for either Mr. Whiting or Mr. Ross, what kind of language would ensure that none of your ongoing projects that have already been put out to bid and awarded would be impacted?
Yeah, through the board president, to member Donley. The proposed language in Board Policy 3312, as it states, "No contract for construction which exceeds $1 million would maybe executed unless being first reviewed." That language should be altered to say "solicited," because that would align it with 3311.2, Section B, at the end of the first sentence, as it talks about an estimated amount. And then E, as it talks about, as the officer, purchasing officer procures, which is a solicitation action. So if that were aligned, that would reduce that conflict between those two policies.
So you're suggesting possibly replacing the word "executed" with "solicited"?
Yes, sir.
So if I might, through the president, to member Donley. So if, I guess, just to kind of walk the process and why we're recommending solicited. So the way it's documented in 3311.2, it's early in the process, and it's really kind of a solicitation. So let's just say that, you know, we solicit, and the estimate is below the threshold, that if we move forward on the solicitation, and we go to, we receive a bid, or bids that exceed the, that threshold amount, then by 3312, we have to stop at that point, and go back to square one to have a review. The risk there is that you will have had contractors, you know, in good faith, bid on projects, which you're going to have to reject, because the way the language is written, we can't execute because it exceeds the threshold amount. So if we keep the language as "solicited", that if we get bids that exceed, we've already gone to a point where it would be very problematic to stop everything, to not accept solicitation of bid, and then go back to ground one. So that's the recommendation and the reason why.
Other comments? Again, the motion?
Oh, I have a question.
Yes.
This is, again, a sort of a language question. And I'm thinking about your comments, Mr. Whiting, about the 30-day window versus a three-month window. With language referring to sort of the start of that solic, I'm wondering if you could grandfather some things in, essentially through language. So if you were to, if it were to read, "The board policy shall be effective for new, new projects undergoing the procurement process, new solicitations, within 30 days." I mean, I'm just wondering if we could somehow start the clock?
Through the board president.
I'm not quite sure what the language should look like. I'm not quite sure what the language looks like.
There may be a way for you to get at it that way. What we're identifying is, we certainly, the standard operating procedure for Board Policy, you know, policy, and I've authored several of them for different agencies, is that, you know, the effective date of a policy is when you would begin that process. What I'm pointing out, or what has been pointed out by myself and Mr. Roth, is that if you use the execution language in 3312, you create a conflict where you, it creates an ambiguity and conflict between the two. So if you remove the execution to be solicitation, then the effective date of the policy is much cleaner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I would move that the language in Section BP 3312--
Now, we have a motion before us, Member Donley.
Oh, we have a motion?
Yes, we do, is the 30-day language.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So can you hold that a minute?
Yes.
Okay. So the motion before us is to modify the SCWA in Section 3 to read, "The Board Policy shall be effective within 30 days upon passage and approval by the School Board." That is the motion before us right now, and I'll call for the vote.
Student vote?
Yes.
Member Donley? Member Higgins?
No.
Member Lessens?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
President Bellamy?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes five to two. All right, now, I don't know who had the next motion. Member Donley, was it you? Or was, okay.
Oh, somebody else has one.
I don't, I can't remember. Go to you. Your mic, please.
What I'm going to propose is to replace the word executed with solicited under the BP 3312 contracts section.
Just a minute. That's, we're not on 93 yet. Can you hold it? We're still on Memo 94. There's two separate memos, so can you hold that to Memo number 93?
Thank you, Madam President.
Okay. Is there other, any other? Yes.
I move to replace the words labor organizations in Section D. It's one, two, three, four. Yes, Section D, the fourth line, is the first time we see labor organizations.
Okay, give Katie just a minute.
With the words parties to any SCWA. And then on the eighth line, where it says labor organizations again, I'd like to add the words and other interested parties. Also, this is all in Section D.
Section D.
Yes.
You want to? Yeah, we'll take a three-minute eddies just to get the language correct. Let me see. Okay. Party. Parties participation. Tell me. So you're trying to, I'm trying to make--
And, you know, I looked at that, but that--
Maybe labor and other parties, other parties participating.
If, so can I borrow your language? You prefer I make it?
Oh, yeah, I mean, can I make another?
Yeah, if it's different, changing it from 3.5 to something else makes it different.
Okay. All right. If you can borrow my language, you have the space.
No, yeah, but you're welcome to do it. I'll second.
All right. Just to get it out there.
Right, oh, I like, this is my special. Yeah. Yeah, this is my special.
Yeah, okay.
If it hasn't, I forget. I saw, I saw your file, I put a line through it, I saw your signature. Oh, yeah. Everyone, everyone's the same.
Bye. Much. We'll see you later. Okay, we got it?
Yeah, the funny part is like you-- No, it doesn't look as if it's too--
I'll second. So I'd like to welcome everybody back. Yeah. Okay, so the motion before us. Let's see, now, this is Amendment Number Two, in Section D, on lines four and eight. The motion is to replace the words labor organizations with the word labor organizations and other parties. That was, the motion is by Member Lessens, and it was second by Member Bellamy. So would you like to speak to your motion, Ms. Lessens?
Thank you. This is a response to written testimony and maybe some of the verbal testimony, but it was flagged for me when I read the written testimony earlier today, that the words labor organizations could be fairly narrowly construed, and I wanted to make it more broadly encompassing.
Okay. Any, any questions, comments? Does that, what about staff? Any, any input, feedback on making that language change in Item D, line four and eight? Okay, seeing none, hearing no more discussion, let's vote.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Lessens?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Higgins?
Trying to get unmuted. Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
President Bellamy?
Yes.
And that, that motion, was that the last one?
Yes.
Yes, that passes seven, zero. We are still on Memorandum Number 94. Hold on, let me find my paperwork. I've got so many papers here. Sorry. Hold on. Basically, I moved to, to change the construction project requirement to $2 million.
I'll second.
I'll second. So it's been moved and second to change the project trigger to $2 million, and for reasons I stated with the 3.5 million recommendation before, I think the $1 million is low, I think it could be burdensome. And I think part of all of the projects that we looked at start somewhere between $2.5 and $5 million. So that's my motion. Any comments? Member Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate the opportunity to discuss, and I think that this amendment could address some of the testimony we heard tonight, as well as concerns from the administration. And so I'm all for continuing to compromise as we craft the best policy possible, so I believe I can support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Jacobs. Any other comments? Seeing none?
A question. I apologize if this is a repetitive question, but do we have a sense of the number of projects in the past year that would be, that fall into the category of $2 million and above? Just for scope, please.
Through the Board President to Member Lessens, I'd have to extend my apologies. I did not do that review of the past projects, but is your question in the context of, in the $2 million range, kind of what typical percentage of projects fall in that range?
Yeah, I guess I'm curious about how many would, how a $1 million threshold would be different and be less burdensome than a $2 million threshold? So I'm wondering what the scope of that impact would be.
Would be less burdensome. The, again, as, as I had previously stated in the work session, the complexity of a $2 million project does differ from a $1 million. That's a distinction between the two. And there, there would be, although I don't, you know, like I said, it'd be anecdotal, I don't have the numbers as to how many per year are 2 million, but if the, you know, if the threshold were lower, it would be more projects. It would be most significant projects that we do of any kind would fall in the 1 million category. 2 million would take us into a little bit into the mid-range, the beginning of the mid-range. So there would be, it would reduce that number some, but 2 million is not a exceedingly, it's not a very large number for an ASD construction project, it's fairly low.
Okay, seeing no more, no other hands for comments. The motion before you is to raise the threshold amount of SCWA to $2 million. Ready for the vote?
Member Donley?
No.
Member Lessens?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
No.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
No.
Member Higgins?
No.
President Bellamy?
Yes.
And that motion fails three to, four to three. Okay. Any other amendments? do you have the language? The change would be, two changes. Line one to see, one, two, three, four, five, six. Line six, we would strike, provide the master, we would strike, provide the master SCWA, strike those words, insert direct. And on the next line, the purchasing officer, direct the purchasing officer to insert, negotiate the master with the Trades Council, the master SCWA with the Trades Council. So for me, oh, if there's not a second, I don't need to speak to it. Not hearing a second, the motion fails. My next motion is to, under E, strike that last sentence, "Construction projects that do not meet the threshold amount," it's already included in B, it seems repetitive to me to be inserted here. The last line of B is, says pretty much the same thing. So I move to strike, "Construction projects do not meet the threshold amount of a qualifying district project, but are phases of components of a larger district construction project may be referred to the SCWA team for review under this section." That's the motion, hearing no second, that motion fails. Are there any other motions or comments by the Board? Then that brings us to, are you ready, Katie?
Okay. Almost there.
Okay. So we've had a round of amendments, and it's now time to vote on the main memorandum. And Memorandum Number 094, addition to School Board Policy BP 3311.2, the student community work agreement, requirements for construction projects over $1 million. Yes, as amended, sorry.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Higgins?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Lessens?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
So I, I assume this is the time to say that I am the Community Outreach Manager for IBW Local 1547, which is the only one at the table who works for anybody in the construction industry.
Are there any other, um, motions or comments by the board? Then that brings us to, uh, are you ready, Katie?
Okay, almost there.
Okay. So we've had, uh, a round of amendments, and it's now time to vote on the main memorandum. And memorandum number 094, addition to, uh, school board policy VP 3311.2, the student community work agreement, requirements for construction projects over $1 million. Uh, yes, as amended, sorry.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Higgins?
Yes.
Member Donnelly?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
So I, I, I assume this is the time to say that I am the Community Outreach Manager for IBW Local 1547, which is the only one at the table who works for anybody in the construction industry. So for that reason, I'm going to go ahead and recuse myself, so that there, there's no assumption that I have influenced this vote.
Uh, thank you, Member, uh, Wilson. Continue with the vote.
President Bellamy?
Yes. So that passes with, uh, six yays and one abstention. Thank you. That brings us to our next item. Thank you, Steph. You ready, Man, Member Holloman?
Was, was there another amendment on board policy? That Member Donnelly wanted?
Yes, the 93, the one you're going to read now.
Okay. I move to approve ASD memorandum number 093, revision board policy 3312 contracts.
Paul's second.
Okay, it's moved in second to, uh, approve memorandum number 093. And that would be the revision to school board policy, uh, 3312. Member Donnelly had a...
Would we have public testimony first before we?
No one signed up.
Oh, okay, alright. I would move to change the word executed to solicited.
Second.
Moved in second to change the word executed to solicited. Right, take your time. I think it was Donnelly's motion and Holloman's second. Okay, Member Donnelly, you want to speak to your, we, I think I know why, but, uh, you want to speak to your motion?
It was a, this was a recommendation by the representatives of the administration to, um, facilitate a smoother transition between this policy and the, the new policy and the existing policy. I think that explains it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments? Okay, seeing none.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Donnelly?
Yes.
Member Higgins?
Yes.
President Bellamy?
Yes. And that passes 7-0. Thank you. That concludes our action items for tonight. Oh, I'm sorry. Getting ahead of myself. So that brings us to memorandum number 93, uh, as amended. Call the, call the vote.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Higgins?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Donnelly?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
President Bellamy?
Yes. And that passes 7-0. Thank you. Now we go to non-action, and I'd like to pull memorandum number 086. Dr. Bishop, can I get you to speak to that?
Thank you, Madam President. Delighted to. Uh, this action, uh, will come before you, uh, or this non-action item will come before you at the next meeting, and, uh, I would, uh, welcome, um, the opportunity for staff who worked on this to share, um, just a brief background, uh, to help inform, uh, your decision for next week, and so that if, uh, what they share sparks some interest, additional interest, that you'll have the questions, uh, ready, uh, to be able to vote next week. So with that, um, I'll let them introduce themselves, Madam President, and the piece of paper that is up there is also something from this, um, uh, presentation. So I will turn it over to them. Again, this is on the English 1 and English 2 ELA curriculum review. Thank you.
Thank you, welcome, guys.
Good evening. Let's get it on. Okay, good evening, my name is Diane Orr, Director in the Teaching and Learning Department.
Hello. My name is Dawn Waggoner, and I am the ELA Curriculum Coordinator for the English School District.
A good evening, Madam President and members of the board. Thank you for allowing us to share our English 1 and English 2 review with you this evening. To align with the board goals, it is the mission to make sure students receive English courses that prepare them for college, a career, and prepares them for being successful in their future after high school. These courses must include being evidence-based, standards-aligned, and provide consistent, high-quality, grade-level instruction for all students. Next slide. Due to these two courses being on the current year curriculum review calendar, and our obligation to evaluate and provide a comprehensive instructional program, we begin this review, we began this review process this fall. As data tells a story, the historical data shows more than half of our students are not reaching proficiency. Therefore, this also supports the need for this review. And now I'm going to pass it over to Dawn, who will share the actual review process.
Thank you. For the curriculum review process, we examined student data, standards, and the current academic plans. We included the springboard academic plans as they vertically aligned with the ELA curriculum in middle school. From the, uh, sorry, from the examination, we determined the choices, and in this case, it was a choice to revise the current academic plans or extend springboard to grades 9 and 10. A committee of 16 members was formed through an application process. Four of the members declined for various reasons, so the final committee was comprised of 11 high school English teachers from the comprehensive high schools and one principal. These members represented all regions of our district. The first step was to train the committee members on using the Educator Evaluating Quality Instructional Products, or EQUIP rubric. The EQUIP evaluates materials in these key dimensions, alignment to standards and key shifts in standards, text complexity, evidence-based reading and writing, instructional support, and access for all students, and a variety of opportunities for assessment. Each dimension is evaluated using an overall ranking of 0 to 3, 0 meaning it does not meet the criteria, and 3 meaning it meets most of the criteria. The committee met, excuse me, the committee met on these dates to work through the EQUIP on both the current academic plans and the springboard academic plans. On December 7th, the, the committee reviewed all of the data and evaluation results and provided final feedback. The graphic is a compilation of data from the committee. The numbers are an average score for both grades in each dimension. The data shows a significant difference between the two plans. The current plan scored above a 1 overall, which means the plans meet some of the criteria. The springboard plan scored just below a 3, meaning they meet most of the criteria. The committee was split between overhauling the current academic plans materials and extending springboard to grades 9 and 10. There were many opportunities for public viewing, and through these viewings, we received feedback from students, teachers, and some community members that was generally positive.
Excellent. So, gotta turn it on. After consideration of all the review information, including district goals, student data, curriculum priorities, committee evaluation ratings, committee feedback, community feedback, and the alignment with, uh, middle school curriculum, inclusive practices, and the equal opportunity schools work, it is recommended to extend the springboard curriculum to grade 9 English 1 and grade 10 English 2. Thank you, and now we'll take any questions.
Thank you for that overview. Questions, board members? Member Lessons?
Thank you for this opportunity. Could you give us a sense of why committee members were split? In, in that decision-making process?
Sure. Um, some were split because they would like to continue using what they already have and what is familiar, and, um, some decided that when they looked at what would be available through the, uh, springboard programs, that they would rather move to, um, the curriculum.
And, um, one of the details in the memo said that there will be a six-year cost for the new sort of consumables. Do we have a sense of what, what the scale or magnitude of, of that, of this investment would look like?
I believe that the cost that is in there covers all six years.
Okay. Member Holloman?
I'm wondering if, if the implementation involves a master plan, the way it did in elementary, that's not part of the curriculum itself, but rather developed by a different entity for how it's to be taught?
I'm not quite sure, understand by a plan that's developed by someone else.
My understanding is, in, in the elementary grades, the, there's a curriculum, but then there was a master plan that was developed by a separate entity, and my shaky memory doesn't remember the brand name.
Madam, uh, President, I can assure that, um, that was actually developed by teachers here, and it's called a priority plan. Given the curriculum in elementary school, it covered about four hours a day of, um, instruction, and so the priority plan demonstrated which things in the curriculum were directly tied to standards and which were not. And so the priority plan is standards-based.
And essentially, we do the same thing with any new curriculum. We make and build academic plans, which will be done the same way with springboard.
Okay, let's not see any more. Member Lessons?
I guess this is a follow-up to my follow-up. I, I don't actually see any dollar amount anywhere.
I'll have to get you, um, that. I, I do have that number. So it's mostly the cost of the books, which, when you do a six-year contract, goes, the cost of those books goes down every year.
We can provide that information for you.
Thank you. Member Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam President. So, to follow up on a topic that we just touched on here a minute ago, so that the committee was comprised of 16 individuals, uh, said that a quarter of the committee didn't participate. Am I reading that right? And then, as a follow-up, I guess along the same lines, do we ever include, um, so I guess the, of who participated, is it the 11 teachers and administrator, and who else besides those 12, uh, were on the committee? Was it more teachers and more administrators, or were there, um, external stakeholders?
Um, yeah, I can share some of that. So the committee, just so you know, is, is made up of, um, applications, so people that desire to be on it, and, uh, Dr. Knutson can share those. Uh, the four members did drop out because we were in the middle of negotiations, and the stipend for this was $1,000 to participate, and there was, um, a desire for $2,000, um, given a, a different committee, and so, um, just the sign of the times, um, some dropped off, and that's what they shared. But I, I could give you, um, some background. I think that we deliberately didn't put committee member names on here, but that, um, if Dr. Knutson or, um, at the table have background, um, when we create these committees, we want diversity in people, as well as diversity in locations, of, like, um, schools, that they, they are different schools, and not the same schools, and not the same type of schools.
Right, so it was a representative of all district, the whole district, all regions of the district.
Member Jacobs, do you have follow-up?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. So when, and I guess, I can take this offline too, if we're getting too in-depth, but when we lose, um, participants for whatever reason, whether it be the stipend isn't sufficient or, um, scheduling conflicts, do we attempt to resolicit and ask for more applications? Or, um, then it, it sounds like that, this is another learning opportunity for myself, that district staff are, and employees are the individuals who are invited to apply. Do we ever open it up to, um, educated or qualified, um, folks in the community to apply if we have open seats? Thank you.
So through the President to Member Jacobs, um, right now, we do an application process, and the business process we have for curriculum review involves a curriculum committee of educators who can review the materials, no instructional background, and that type of thing. We do public viewing, so we have community member feedback through the process. Um, I will say, when we do have, um, committee members drop out, or we have a hard time getting committee members, I always work with the AEA Association and work with Coriace to try and get more, um, applications, and in this particular situation, we didn't have any luck. We did have representation from all schools, though, and that was the priority in, um, looking at this.
So the community input part comes from the viewing and the evaluations on that level?
Correct.
Okay. Member Lessons? And then, uh, Member Wilson?
Thank you. Could you guys just give us a sense of the scale of that community input? Because I, we received information recently as the board saying, hey, there was this February 3rd session added. I spoke where I could at community councils, but my understanding was that it was added because prior participation was so low. So what, how much community input did we get?
Through the President to Member Lessons, that is a really good question, and typically when we do curriculum reviews, our community input and turning out for giving feedback is really low. We go through our, um, advisory committees and promote it, we promote it through social media, um, we put it out there, and we, that is frankly, an issue in doing any reviews or a lot of committees that we have. So that's something as a district and a board that we definitely need to work on, and figuring out how do we get more input from folks? Um, but it is a continuing problem when we need community input.
Thank you. Member Wilson?
Two questions, hopefully fairly quick ones. Um, how many pilot schools will there be? I saw there's pilot schools noted.
We'll have four pilot schools, four of the high schools.
And I was looking at number nine, Technology Support for Student Access, Instruction Assessment, and Teacher Planning. Is, is that a huge step up from the curriculum that was used before regarding the technology with this day and age? I know it's really important for our tech, for technology to keep up with curriculum.
Actually, it's going to be absolutely wonderful for kids, because they'll have digital access to all the curriculum, so it can be done at home, and they don't have to carry their books back and forth. Thank you.
Member Higgins? I see your hand.
Thank you. Kind of a yellow-looking hand, but it's okay. Uh, you know, mine is a little bit the process. I know you're going through a process of, of reviewing options. Who, who selects the options? Because I know there's a lot of choices out there, and I'm just wondering, is that come from the administration to the group and say, these are the ones you have to choose from?
So through the President to Member Higgins, in this particular case, the question before us was, we are already doing springboard in grades 6... us was, we are already doing springboard in grade six through eight. So we have a very rigorous curriculum. So what was brought to the committee was, one, do we look at a variety of things that are out there? Do we revise the current academic plans, which would involve a huge overhaul, new materials and stuff with that to align to standards? Or do we extend what we're currently doing in middle school up to English one and two, which is a viable option that we've been doing with kids? The committee's feedback was not to go out for a full review of multiple curriculum because we have a viable curriculum that can be moved up into English one and two. And so that was the will of the committee, as well as looking at what would it take to revise our current curriculum, which would be pretty significant. You know, we aren't, as educators, always trained to do that development of curriculum. We're trained to teach and to educate kids, but the development of curriculum is oftentimes not what many people have been trained in. So the amount of training that would go in to helping us develop our own curriculum would be a lot. We did it for one, one curriculum for Engla, or for our social studies, grade three, and it took us three years to create that for one grade level, one specific subject area. So it's extremely time-intensive, and it create, we have to do contracted services to work with us on. Did that answer your question?
Yes, and let me, you know, one of the issues that I've kind of raised, and we haven't gone there yet, is the idea of doing a comprehensive curriculum audit with the district, looking at not just outcomes, but recognizing if you did a, look for best practices, look at all the options out there, and what could be the best choices. Would this be, because of the location, how it's being used with different kids, would this logically be part of that?
I'm not sure I understand your question. A curriculum audit, looking at how we review and evaluate curriculum as one thing, and how an audit would do, and this is specific to English one and two?
Okay. Yeah, I'm thinking in terms of if we, there's a comprehensive review of all of our curriculum, and there was an audit comes in, Council of AC schools done that in the past, I think, and different curriculums do it. And if we did a comprehensive curriculum review of the district, it seems like this would be part of that, is true. Is that logical or not? You see what I'm, if you understand?
Yeah, I see what you're talking about.
English one or two, or this specific textbook?
I'm thinking, is this just part of a larger audit of all of our curriculum? We've got different results coming in, and we've got different options out there nationally of what's performing best and getting the best outcome in different districts. And I'm just wondering if this, if we do that for, do a curriculum audit of the district, would this be included in that curriculum audit, would this logically?
I would say only if you voted yes, it would be. It's not voted on yet.
Yeah.
But it would be inclusive of curriculum audit. And I have found those highly valuable in the past. Member Higgins, so I would recommend one.
I think the district would get to define the depth and breadth of any audit, correct? I mean, we wouldn't do every curriculum at the same time, or would we? Or we would, it could go over, okay?
Yeah, and it's not just evaluating our curriculum, but it's looking at our business process, how we go about it, the equity.
Yeah, and I think that's what Member Higgins is really interested in. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Did you have a follow-up, Member Higgins?
No, that's good, thank you.
Thank you. Member Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of follow-ups. In the next Board Connect, if it's not an issue, can we get the information for who was on this committee? And then, if there's any recommendations the administration for, has for how the board can support these committees going forward to make sure that they're fully staffed? I would appreciate that, too. Thank you.
I know in the past, board members have actually attended some of those curriculum committee meetings. Do I see a hand or? Okay. Anybody, oh, Member Lessons?
You always see a hand over here. Could you just give me a sense, maybe during the pilot year, of what the professional learning for our 19th, 10th grade teachers would look like for the following year? I guess what I'm recalling from joining the board was that this spring, in advance of the new third grade social studies, you know, there was a day where third grade teachers were invited to do a deep dive. I mean, what does the professional learning for a new curriculum, what would, how will teachers be supported?
Yeah, and through the President to Member Lessons, I'm going to start off, and then I'm going to turn it over to Don. But what, we have really shifted our practice in curriculum reviews and adoptions, and this goes back to our elementary reading, where we used to do just one day at the beginning of the year. And that really isn't supportive of our teachers to get it, you know, get all your curriculum, you have one day to train, and then you're expected to go out and do that. So what we've done is we've moved to a longer process for review process, so that's why you see a pilot year there. So the pilot year, when we're working with four schools in this case, allows us to work with those schools, provide professional development. So it's training on the materials, but then also providing the ongoing training, as well as working with department chairs so that they do coaching with teachers as well. Because what we have learned is, training where you're just giving knowledge and skill building is like 10% of the learning that should happen. So really, that job embedded professional learning where you have other teachers coaching each other is a big piece. And then also, through PLCs and collaboration time meetings, that's when they have discussion and dialogue about the instruction, that's part of the professional learning. So that first year with those pilot schools, we'll be able to start doing that and figuring out what works and what doesn't work, and what do we need for the rest of the schools in order to do better professional development that's going to meet their needs. So it'll be a combination. It'll be training on the materials and the assessments that go within the materials. It will be job embedded professional development through coaching, and then also, how do we leverage those collaboration times and professional learning communities for dialogue for teachers to talk about it?
The only thing that I would add is that as part of our contract, we would have what are called initial institutes for pilot teachers, and then the following year for those coming on the next year. And that initial institute is three days of intensive training from college board springboard. They would have someone come and work with teachers to go through not just the materials, but the philosophy and pedagogy behind the curriculum. And then, they continue to support and work and provide training for those teachers. And it becomes a cycle, then as you onboard the next schools, they get the initial training, and then they also start having their own kind of cohort of meetings. It's usually about once a month where they come in together and have some embedded professional development. And then we also would look at, on those in-service days, those cross-district days, of having trainings, ongoing trainings for the pilots, for those then who are onboarding and bringing them in.
If I can add to, I could go on all night about PD, but I won't. But there is another component. One of the benefits of the pandemic was us shifting to doing more online professional development, and it really has helped us fill the holes for what we can't do in face-to-face. So what's happened with our math adoption, and what's happened with springboard for our middle school, as well as what we'll do with high school, is we have supplemental PD that we can put into Canvas courses, so that you have that dialogue and discussion. So when you build knowledge and skills, you can, I mean, people do it through YouTube, they do it online, there's many ways they can build that knowledge and skills. Teachers are trained professionals, and they can do that. So that's going to be a supplemental piece to the face-to-face training, and then really, that collaboration and coaching piece is the key to actual successful implementation.
Thank you. All right, coming back on this side. Kelly, you got another question? Because I think we were about done.
Okay, I got one last follow-up. Will, will teachers, will there be assessments of, I don't know, how teachers are supported in that process? I mean, it's a lot of great supports. Are those supports themselves ever assessed?
That's a great question. Through the implementation process, when you're looking at the initiation phase of an implementation, that's your beginning part where you're building those knowledge and skills. That's where we get feedback for teachers on what those needs are. So yes, that's, there needs to be a feedback loop. That is one of the things we've learned from working with Mike Murphy, when we partnered with AEA and did some of that work, and that's a piece that will be built into this.
Not seeing any more questions. I thank you for your time, and we'll look forward to the next step, next time we'll vote. Thank you, guys. So that brings us to item I on our agenda, superintendent's update.
Thank you, Madam President. I have no further comments.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I don't, do we, we do have another public comments section, but I don't think we have any. Yeah, there was no one signed up. All right, so that brings us to school board and administration comments. We're going to start with you, Member Higgins, coming around to the left today.
Ah, okay, off-screen, huh? Appreciate both of them. Not really much in the way of comments. I know that upcoming more and more with legislation, and I appreciate all the efforts, and I guess you're going there, President Mogo, and I know that we're answering the public's questions and all, and I think that's important. I just want to thank the speakers again tonight. I know that we heard a different presentation, and it didn't quite match everything that we've been working on, but I think it, I think it's always important to acknowledge their comments. I appreciate the concerns. I think there are issues that can be addressed and worked out, and so I'm confident with that. And with that, I'll wish everybody a good evening.
Thank you. All right, Member Holloman, and then Wilson, coming around.
Nothing real specific, other than this is the week we changed our policy. I know there have been a few bumps here and there that some people felt caught by surprise, and I think especially by the masking on buses, which I assume changed rather rapidly because of change in federal policy. And just thank you to all the staff for making it work, taking care of kids, and trying to make everything go as smoothly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Wilson?
Just want to reiterate my trip to Juneau with our fantastic teacher Heidi, and our students, all of our students was amazing. They really are fantastic examples of the amazing product that Anchorage School District, amazing students that Anchorage School District educates. So just want to reiterate that that was, that was an awesome time, and I look forward to my next trip to Juneau with my next set of students. If it's the same set of students, that would be awesome, too, and another teacher. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go in the middle tonight because I want to call attention to our lovely, now they were up last time, our banners, our goals, and our guardrails. They got changed out. I noticed them at our last meeting, but by the time it gets to me, I forget because everybody talks so much. So I did want to thank, I see Kathy written all over it, but I also see staff. It's all of our stuff. So thank you very much. I appreciate that. And Dr. Bishop, if in the Board Connect this week, if, you know, I've been thinking about the Ukrainian situation, and I know we have students, Ukrainian and Russian students. I don't know how they're struggling, but I, I, just some indication of how we are helping to, you know, support the families. I would appreciate that. And then, my final, I had a final, but I forgot it. So, oh, I didn't want to do that. Anyway, I hear you laughing, Pat. All right, thank you. That's all for now, until I remember the other thing.
All right, I'll take the baton. I had two thoughts. First of all, March is Women's History Month, and I hope that our classes are able to take deep thoughtful dives into how women's history comprises roughly half of our history, and there are creative ways to address that. And so, I think that's really important. The second thought I had that I wanted to share was that Ski for Kids was last weekend. I was able to go with my own family, had a great time watching kids, families, and teachers, and that was the coolest part, because I know that Ski for Kids has a wonderful partnership with ASD. And so I saw, I saw teachers, I saw busloads of students from across ASD holding their own in some icy conditions. They were learning avalanche science and safety. They had opportunities to try skis, fat bikes, try ski jumping, do obstacle courses. There was a storybook course. It was a really fabulous opportunity to just see people out having a wonderful time, enjoying the best of what Alaska has to offer in the winter. And moreover, I wanted to share that Ski for Kids raises money to bring quality ski gear to schools that need updates or might not otherwise have access. Since 2014, 34 different grants have been distributed to ASD schools from the Nordic Ski Association, which I think is remarkable. Last year, Gladus Wood received 4,000, and Betty Davis East received under $2,500. And grants are open right now until May 4th for up to $2,500. So if your kids need skis, boots, poles, head that way.
Thank you, Madam President. It's just so wonderful to see so many faces again. Just very, very happy that that's happening, and I hope we get to the point in the near future where everybody will feel safe enough to not have to wear a mask. But it's wonderful progress.
Thank you, Member Donley. Member Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam President. Want to appreciate, express appreciation for our staff. We're continuing to do some amazing work in some very challenging conditions. And for those who made time to stop by and speak at our meeting tonight, my respect goes out to everyone who takes time to participate in the local civic process. Upcoming board meetings include our finance and, sorry, our Governance and Communications Committee meeting on the 16th at 3:30 and 4:30, and then finances on the 23rd at noon. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Bishop, any final comments?
As a reminder, we do have a joint meeting this Friday.
Yes, that's what I was trying to remember. Thank you very much. So we do have a joint assembly meeting in this space on Friday morning, and we'll see you all there. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Moved in second? No opposition? Thank you. And good night.